Okay, good evening, everyone. Is this on? Can you hear me? Okay. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for being here. We have a small gathering in a large room. So first, I want to invite you, if you're interested and so inclined, to maybe come down to these front rows and get to know some of the other people who are here. My name is Dean Logan. I'm the registrar/recorder county clerk for Los Angeles County. And this is the first of what will be five public hearings that we're conducting on our election administration plan for Los Angeles County leading into the 2020 presidential primary election. So I want to thank you for your attendance. I also want to take this opportunity to thank the City of Long Beach and City Clerk Bonique Delagarza for providing us this space. These are new council chambers, so it's great to be here. Also, if you have not had a chance, if you need to have parking validated from the city lot on Broadway and Chestnut, we do have validation in the back, so please see the people at the check-in desk for that. So again, the purpose of the hearing tonight is to talk about the election administration plan. And the election administration plan is a requirement under the Voters' Choice Act that was passed by the California Legislature and signed by then-Governor Jerry Brown, giving counties the local option of adopting a new model of voting in California. And it's a model that moves away from the single-day, single-location, precinct-based voting model that has been in place for a very long time to a multiple-day, multiple-location voting experience where voters have the opportunity to go to any vote center in the county over a period of 11 days to cast their vote. It also aligns with a project that we have been working on in Los Angeles County for over a decade, the Voting Solutions for All People Initiative, which, in conjunction with our adoption of the Voters' Choice Act, will be implemented in 2020. And that includes a number of components that you'll hear about in the presentations this evening. The draft election administration plan was posted on our website on October 9th. That website is lavote.net. It's been developed to describe our strategy to administer the elections under the California Voters' Choice Act and our implementation of the Voting Solutions for All People Initiative. At a high level, the plan communicates the county's voter education and outreach plan. That's really the emphasis of the plan, is to document the process by which we're going to inform the public of the new voting process in LA County. It also outlines our process for identifying and operating the vote centers and vote-by-mail drop-off locations that will be located throughout the county, extending and expanding access for voters in the county. The plan is available in an accessible format in 13 languages and is currently open for public comment through November 19th. So we are taking public comment both online as well as through these public hearings. Just to put on record, the public comments on the plan can be made several ways. They can be made by phone by calling our office at (562) 229-6361. Public comment can be submitted by email at vsap, that's V-S-A-P, at rrcc.lacounty.gov, or online at lavote.net. Under the tab for the election administration plan, there's a direct place where you can click a button and present your feedback. Additionally, we will be taking in-person testimony from anyone who wishes to provide that tonight. We're going to start with a presentation that you'll see tonight that focuses on the key points of the election administration plan and details on various topics that are structured in the table of contents of the election administration plan. We are going to conduct the meeting tonight as a true public hearing in a standard public hearing format. We ask that you hold your questions until the public comment portion of the meeting and ask that your comments focus on the content of the election administration plan. If you haven't done so already and you wish to provide testimony during the public comment period, please fill out a comment card at the sign-in table if you would like to speak. And please be advised that we are recording this and we'll be posting this as part of our comprehensive background on the project at a later date. We'll also be documenting all public comments, so there will be a record maintained. We may not necessarily engage in a Q&amp;A, although the group is small enough this evening, there probably will be ample opportunity to do that. Our main focus is to allow opportunity for people to put comments on the record and for that to advise the amendment of the election administration plan prior to our submission to the Secretary of State. So with that, that's kind of the overview of what we're going to do this evening. I'd like to start by offering to show you a video based on our mock election. A couple weeks ago, we did hold a mock election in LA County in 50 locations, which was our opportunity to introduce this new voting model to the public and kind of a kickoff to the public outreach and education campaign that will take place extending forward through the end of January 2020, as well as we move into the voting period for the March election, which will actually begin with vote-by-mail ballots going in the mail on February 3rd and vote centers actually opening on February 22nd. So we are literally months away from the voting process starting for the March presidential primary here in LA County. So we have just a quick video summary of the mock election to give you an idea of how that went, and after that, we'll go into the presentation form for this evening.
The machine was pretty good, man. I think it's so much faster and easier to just press and click the screen rather than like punching something.
It's literally a touchscreen with instructions that are easily understandable.
This is as simple as like ordering food at any restaurant on like one of those terminals that they have.
Now it's all incorporated in the one machine where if you don't want to just do the screen, you have issues hearing, we have audio. If you're blind, we have a touchpad that will help you through the process. So all those things, so we're covering all the bases of people with all kinds of disabilities.
It wasn't as intimidating to use as, you know, the piece of paper with everything on it and worrying about, "Am I missing something?"
I thought that the process was very easy, very streamlined, and I think our younger generation will be excited about it, too.
I think they're going to like it more. It's going to change completely. It's like a different ballgame. The voters in LA County should be very excited about the new changes.
So that provides just a snapshot of the summary of what took place at the mock election and some of the feedback that we received from voters, and we hope that that also feeds into the type of outreach and education and type of feedback that we intend to get from voters and stakeholders through these public hearings and as we move forward with implementation. So with that, let me quickly introduce my colleagues and project team members who are up here with me, who will be giving the presentations today. To my left, Jeff Klein, who is manager of our voter outreach and education program in the department. Monica Flores, who is the administrative project lead for the Voting Solutions for All People Initiative. Aaron Navarez is the manager of our government legislative affairs division for the department. He's our external liaison with all other governments and the legislature. Tarina Carasoma is another manager in our government and legislative affairs division and was instrumental in putting together the election administration plan and the materials that are going to be presented tonight. And Mike Sanchez is our public information officer and is leading our effort to put together with the media partnerships that will be used for the outreach and education campaign. There are a number of other team members here in the audience. That's most of you who are here tonight, so I want to welcome you. We are all available to talk with people after the formal hearing and to respond to any questions or to provide additional opportunities to discuss the project. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Aaron Navarez, who's going to kick off our presentations.
Thank you, Dean. So what we wanted to do tonight, and again, Aaron Navarez from the registrar's office, is briefly talk about the Voters' Choice Act. So the Voters' Choice Act is the authorizing legislation that allows counties to move forward with this new model of voting. The Voters' Choice Act was passed by the legislature in 2016 and signed by then-Governor Jerry Brown. Five counties moved forward in a pilot capacity in November of 2018, I'm sorry, June of 2018. And now, this year, another handful of counties are moving forward with the implementation of the Voters' Choice Act, Los Angeles County being one of them. So again, the Voters' Choice Act simply is the authorizing legislation that allows for counties to move forward with the new vote center model. It provides an expansion of opportunities for voters. Again, as Dean mentioned, we are moving from a one-place, one-day model of voting where a voter is assigned a polling place to now, under this model, they will be able to essentially choose where they want to vote, anywhere in Los Angeles County. So now, this is a period of up to 10 days prior to Election Day for a full 11-day voting period. There is also, in Los Angeles County, an expansion of vote-by-mail. So all the other counties in the state will be providing their voters a vote-by-mail ballot. Los Angeles County does not have to follow that requirement, and we will have an additional expansion of vote centers. But we will also be promoting vote-by-mail very heavily throughout the process, and we'll talk about that a little bit as well. Throughout the Voters' Choice Act, there's also requirements to comply with the election administration plan. One of those requirements is that we conduct a public hearing. The others is that we post the election administration plan for the public to provide input on that plan. As Dean mentioned, the plan is now on our website to comply with that portion, but also in the spirit of the law, to get insight and input from the public on the administration of the election prior to the adoption and submission of that to the Secretary of State's office. So again, the plan is currently open. We will conduct five public hearings. The plan will be available for public comment through November 19th. After that time period, we will present an amended draft plan. That period of time will be open for another 14 days. At that time, the department, our department, will submit a final plan to the Secretary of State for his consideration and eventual hopeful adoption. As Dean mentioned, the Voters' Choice Act is the authorizing legislation, but really, it's being done in conjunction with the county's Voting Solutions for All People Initiative. So while the VCA is the authorizing legislation, that is the state's way of expanding, you know, the voting franchise and allowing voters more choice, the county's Voting Solutions for All People is the mechanism by which we will roll this out in Los Angeles County. So when we talk about vsap, vsap really is an entirely new voting experience. It has several elements, some of them technology, some of them not. It introduces electronic poll books, so no longer are we using paper rosters, we're using electronic poll books. We have a new, modern tally system that's developed on open technology platform. We have an interactive sample ballot, which is a modern way for voters to engage with their sample ballot, not voting online, but to engage with their sample ballot interactively on a device of their choosing. Ballot marking device, which is in the center of your screen, and we have some of the ballot marking devices available, is now the new device that will be available for all voters in our new vote centers, as well as an expanded voting period, again, moving from a one-day model to a period of an 11-day model. And vote centers where voters can go to any vote center of their choice over that period, and also a new vote-by-mail experience. So we'll start with the new vote-by-mail experience. Again, under the Voters' Choice Act, vote-by-mail is a big part of that, and Los Angeles County is no different. We will be heavily promoting vote-by-mail and access to vote-by-mail leading up to the March presidential primary. We actually implemented our new vote-by-mail experience in November of 2018. We received very positive comments. It was a model that really looked at making the ballot more usable, more readable, easier to fill out. No longer do you have to put a stamp on the vote-by-mail ballot, it is now postage-paid. And under the new model, there will be a vast expansion of vote-by-mail drop-off locations. Some of that will be covered later on in the presentation, as well as the proposed vote-by-mail locations are in the EAP for the public to review. Additionally, voters can drop off their vote-by-mail ballot at any vote center throughout the county. So really, you can put your ballot in the mailbox, you can take it to a vote center, or you can take it to a vote-by-mail drop-off location. A couple things of note that I should point out that are in the EAP, while Los Angeles County won't be sending every voter a vote-by-mail ballot, there are some specific requirements, which you can review fully in the EAP, that will require Los Angeles County to provide vote-by-mail ballots to all voters in certain areas. So specifically, one that I'll point out is if there is a neighboring county that is moving forward with the Voters' Choice Act. Specifically for us, Orange County is moving forward with the Voters' Choice Act. Any congressional, assembly, or senate districts that we share with a neighboring county, we will be providing vote-by-mail ballots to everyone in those particular districts. And we will ensure through our marketing and outreach campaign that those voters are aware of those specific requirements and ensure that they know that they will be getting a vote-by-mail ballot as well. Again, for more information on the specific requirements of the Voters' Choice Act and the specific requirements of our vote-by-mail requirements, you can view that in the EAP. As I mentioned, vote centers in the voting period are really probably the biggest fundamental shift for our voters in Los Angeles County. Again, no longer are you tied to one place, one time. Vote centers are available throughout the county, and we'll get into how we did our analysis. Again, it was a public process that we'll go through, through a vote center placement project, as to where we will locate them. The full list of vote centers is available in the EAP. Again, they're currently proposed vote centers. We want to make sure we get public input on those. But really, it ensures that voters, regardless of where you live, where you work, the lives that we have, you can find a vote center that's available and convenient for you. So if it's near your home, there will be vote centers there. If it's near your work, there will be vote centers there. If it's near where you drop off your kids for school or daycare, vote center's there. Again, the list goes on and on. Really, this model is about adding convenience and accessibility for voters to really make it as easy to remove any barriers about getting to a vote center. Secondly is the voting period. We've heard a lot in our research that the one-day model is difficult for many voters to get to a vote center. They're either out of town, they weren't aware of the election, and again, the list goes on and on in that capacity as well. Under this new model, voters have 11 days, really at a day of their choosing, two full weekends over that time period to cast their ballot. So again, any vote center across the county is available to all of our voters over an 11-day period. The electronic poll book is a new piece of technology that we're rolling out also in conjunction with the vote center model. Again, if you're familiar with voting now at a polling place, you sign in on a paper roster, and that really is a listing of everyone in that particular precinct. The electronic poll book is an electronic piece of technology that allows, that will allow us and our election workers at any vote center in the county to identify the voter who's come in, check them in on the electronic poll book. The voter will sign the electronic poll book, they'll be given a ballot, and at that point, allow for any voter to cast a ballot anywhere in the county. A couple additional things that are available through the electronic poll book are added functionality specific to things like conditional voter registration. So while there is still a 15-day registration deadline, anyone who registers past that period now has to register conditionally. So all of our vote centers that will be available in Los Angeles County will offer conditional voter registration and will allow things for voters, again, to register, update their registration, things like, you know, traditionally, the two biggest reasons why voters receive provisional ballots today under the current model is you go to a wrong polling place. There is no more wrong polling place. And the second reason is that voters are vote-by-mail voters and haven't brought their vote-by-mail ballot with them. They either forgot it at home, didn't know they were a vote-by-mail voter. For whatever reason, under the current model, you have to vote provisionally. Again, that's our way to ensure that that voter hasn't cast that ballot already. Under this new model and through the electronic poll book, our staff will be able to remotely spoil that ballot and give the voter a ballot they can actually cast at the vote center. Another piece of technology that we're rolling out is called the Interactive Sample Ballot, or ISB. The ISB is a new piece of technology that we're rolling out that's really a convenient way and a kind of a modern way for voters to engage with the sample ballot. So we'll be able to provide and present to them all of the information that's in our paper sample ballot, and we will still be sending out and mailing out our hard copies of the paper sample ballot for those who want them. But for those who want a more modern way to engage with the process, this is not voting online, this is not voting on your phone, it really is a way to interactively engage with the sample ballot. You can make all of your selections. The ISB or Interactive Sample Ballot is available in all of our languages, it will be available on our website, and allow a voter to make all of their selections, generate a QR code that you can either save on your mobile device, a tablet, a mobile phone, personal computer, or print out, similar to, say, a boarding pass, where you can either save it on your phone or print it out, take it to a vote center, and again, load it onto the BMD for an expedited voting experience. And this is important, especially for an election, March of 2020, November of 2020, where the ballot can be incredibly long, from all of the local contests, at a city level, district contests, school districts, college districts, water districts, state contests, county contests, and again, all the way up to the presidential primary, a very long ballot. And oftentimes, that will take voters 10, 15, 20, 25 minutes to go through that ballot. And this way, you can expedite that experience using the ISB. Again, it's not required, it's an optional choice that voters have to use, but something that we're very excited about and hope the voters are as well. And the final two pieces I will touch on are the ballot marking device. As Dean mentioned, the Voting Solutions for All People Initiative has been a decade-long project that has focused on voters, has focused on the needs of voters, what voters expect when they come in to vote and with a piece of voting equipment. And this device has, again, been meticulously and methodically designed with the public at heart. We've brought in a team of experts, security experts, usability experts, accessibility experts, you know, stakeholders who are focused on minority language voters, stakeholders who are focused on accessibility, the community. We've also brought in community stakeholders to this process, to help inform the process. We've done things like research and user testing, focus groups, really to refine this design. And I think at the end of the day, what voters will experience is a device that not only feels modern and has convenience and accessibility, but is also incredibly secure throughout the entire process. And finally, we have our tally system. The tally system is on the back end, and voters often don't see this, but the tally system is the system that tabulates all the votes and, again, counts, essentially counts all the ballots for Los Angeles County. This is a part of the system that is, again, behind the scenes, but is an important part of the system that tallies both our new ballot marking device ballots as well as our vote-by-mail ballots. Before I show the video, I think the one thing to keep in mind about the vsap model is that it is a publicly-owned voting system. So really, the first publicly-owned voting system anywhere in the country. Los Angeles County owns all the intellectual property and will own and operate this system. At the end of the day, security was top of mind, we'll touch on security at the end of the presentation, but really, the point of this presentation was to show those of you who are here and the public at large that there are various new elements of the new voting system that goes hand-in-hand with the implementation of the Voters' Choice Act. We will get into, just a few minutes, into our education and outreach plan, followed by how we got the list of proposed vote centers through our vote center placement project. Again, a brief touch on the vote center list and the vote-by-mail drop-off list, the next steps for that, and we will finish with security. And at this time, we will show a brief video that hopefully kind of incorporates and describes a lot of the elements that I've just mentioned to you previously.
The election is just around the corner, and Los Angeles County has a new way for voters to make their voices heard. New Los Angeles County vote centers are located throughout the county. Cast your ballot near your home, work, or favorite park. Voters can go anywhere. To find a vote center that's convenient, visit lavote.net and find one that works best for you. Instead of waiting for one day to vote, you are now able to vote across 11 days. Once you've arrived, a vote center assistant will greet you and check you in before taking you to the ballot marking device. Did you know that there is a new interactive sample ballot that lets you pre-mark your selections online and generate a poll pass? A unique QR code that will let you quickly transfer, review, and cast your selections on a paper ballot at the county vote center. The new ballot marking device includes an audio ballot, a touchscreen, and a tactile keypad to make voting faster and more accessible. You can also select your language, change the font size, and adjust the contrast for easy viewing. Then, after you make your selections or scan your poll pass, you can review your ballot to verify your choices and cast your ballot by feeding the paper ballot back into the ballot marking device. There's no need to give your ballot to a vote center assistant, you cast it on the same device. Welcome to the future of voting in Los Angeles County. Fast, convenient, and easy. Go to vsap.lavote.net to exercise your right to vote and let your voice be heard.
And now, at this time, I'd like to ask our public information officer, Michael Sanchez, to come up, and Michael will focus specifically on, again, as part of the plan, it's a robust marketing, education, and outreach campaign, and Mike will focus on how we're going to be getting the message across to our extensive, very large electorate in Los Angeles County. Mike?
Awesome. Perfect. All right, thank you, Aaron. So there's a lot that we need to educate LA County voters. Currently, we have 5.4 million registered voters and an additional 1 million who are eligible but not yet registered. And what we need to provide them is exactly what it is that they can expect. So when they can vote, how long they can vote, where they vote, the entire process that they know and have been and going through for decades is literally about to change. So we have some big messages that we need to provide them, and I'm going to give a little bit of a detailed overview of exactly how it is that we're going to be doing that. We're going to be utilizing partnerships that we have already established and actually have been utilizing for previous campaigns in previous election cycles. And one of the biggest elements that we've utilized is radio. In Los Angeles, I think on average, people are in traffic around 55 minutes a day, going, commuting to work, school, home. So we will be utilizing on-air radio advertisements, but it won't just be on the AM and the FM. We will also be utilizing digital platforms like Pandora, Spotify, iHeartRadio, elements that we know people do use, and with those, we actually have even more capability to target and really give specific, precise messages. So radio will be one of the biggest elements that we will be utilizing to get our message across. In addition to that, television, we will be using for television and connected TVs, which is something that some of the younger generations are actually utilizing more now, also known as cord-cutting. That, again, also is similar to the digital streaming applications for radio, only in this particular case, it'd be for television viewing. But we will also have commercials on air on the Big Four networks, also on other cable broadcasting networks as well. Digital elements such as email blasts. We have right now just over 1.5 million emails, so we will absolutely be utilizing email campaigns and also using other digital platforms like website advertisements, website banners. We have the ability to actually target those as well. Outdoor media will be a big, big thing that we'll be utilizing, so billboards on the 5 freeway, we have bus shelters, bus ads. We're literally going to be on moving around the county. We'll have our signs and our messages on these buses. And in addition to that, we will also be utilizing print media. So an example from the 2018, we were actually in the LA Times, but we're not going to limit it just to the Los Angeles Times, we're also going to be in La Opinión and a variety of other multilingual, multi-ethnic outlets that will have our message. And what I want to share with you next is actually a video that we produced to help promote the mock election and also give some insight onto the new voting, excuse me, the new voting experience.
Hey, it's Ryan Mano from the Ellen K. Morning Show, coasting on 3.5. You know, LA County has revolutionized the way you vote for the 2020 elections, making it easier and more convenient for everyone to vote. So the new ballot marking devices all have new adjustable touchscreens to make reading, marking your ballot, and casting your vote completely hassle-free. Adjustable font size, your choice of 13 different languages, an audio headset, and a control pad, which gives you all the tools of pad, which gives you all the tools of simplifying the voting process, which saves you time. All you have to do is show up, make your selections, print, and cast your vote. Boom, done. Plus, over 1,000 voting centers will be available in 2020, and you'll have 11 days to vote at any vote center near you, whether it's near your job, school, shopping mall, maybe a grocery store. You can kiss those days of long lines and confusion at your voting center goodbye. To learn more about the new and improved voting experience, go to coast103.5.com/LAVote.
So you can see like we use that video to actually promote on our social platforms, digital platforms. They actually promoted them on iHeart Media as well, which is one of our established partners who we have used in several election cycles, and they're actually great partners. We also utilize their celebrity personalities. Ryan Mano is actually a celebrity personality himself and is on Coast 103.5 with Ellen K. So again, part of the strategy would be having our messaging told through their voices, voices that are heard already on a daily basis, voices that are trusted. And we will absolutely capitalize on utilizing them as part of our vehicles in communicating our message. But in addition to the paid partnerships that we will be taking advantage of in the next year or two, is we will also be utilizing earned media. And what earned media essentially is, is we will be connecting with local journalists, reporters, news outlets, and we will be providing them materials, we will be providing them information. And in fact, we will actually and have already invited them to come to several media roundtables where they could themselves see the new ballot marking device, they could interact with the new interactive sample ballot, they can ask questions that they have or that they're hearing from the public. And we will utilize these relationships to spread and amplify our message even further. And from those earned relationships, we're going to be able to have featured stories with our department head. We will be able to have interviews that are going to be broadcasted on television, they'll be living on websites, they'll be shared within our community-based organizations. And we will also be using our social media platforms to also again amplify and distribute that message. And again, jumping onto events. A lot of these networks have events that they go to, and we're already beginning the conversations of sharing those events with us so that way our outreach team can actually be in place with a large audience where we know people will be, and we will be able to provide information at those events, we actually be able to provide the actual ballot marking device and really start again getting our message across. And a little bit about more on the outreach element, as of right now, we've actually already began our demonstration centers, VSAP demonstration centers. We have 10 open as of the beginning of October, and we will actually have demonstration centers throughout the remainder of this year and to the end of January 2020. And we will be rotating every month the locations so that way we can really get to every part of the county. And what the voter or what any attendee at the demonstration center will experience is the ballot marking device itself, and they will be able to see the electronic poll book. They're not going to be able to utilize the functionality of it, but they can kind of see and get a sense of what it looks like, they can touch it, they can ask questions about it. And our outreach team is fully equipped and knowledgeable to be able to answer any questions and provide materials to hand out so that they can take home, take back to their community, et cetera. Another big element, as of right now, we've actually conducted over 300 different types of events and/or presentations, and we were able to provide VSAP materials at every single one of those events. And similar to today, we also have materials in the back. If anyone would like to take some home with them, we encourage you to please do that. And at the events that we take, the events that we go to, whether we're hosting or co-hosting, we also have the ballot marking device onsite as well, again, to just get people used to utilizing the ballot marking device, asking questions, becoming more comfortable with the changes that are going to be coming. And lastly, I want to also share that as we get closer to March 2020, we will be providing and creating materials for people to utilize, to share. Anything that we produce as a department is open for public consumption. So if we have a video on our YouTube channels, if we have a social media post, if we have flyers, postcards, we absolutely encourage anybody and everybody to utilize those, share them within their communities, and we will be storing all of this information and videos, et cetera, on our website at LAVote.net. So within the upcoming months, definitely recommend visiting our website to see all of the new materials that we will be producing, and please feel free to share that within your communities as well. And with that said, I'm going to hand it back over to our Outreach Manager, Jeff Klein, who will go into that strategy.
Okay, I'm going to continue with the discussion on outreach, and it really complements the media and communication outreach that we do on a wide scale. This can be thought of more as peer-to-peer outreach, where it involves our team on the ground at events, which Mike had briefly discussed, mobilizing our network of community organizations, empowering our network of organizations. And so what do I mean by all that? So in order to get VSAP out effectively throughout the county, we have been partnering with organizations to put on over 300 VSAP presentations, and that number has been going up. This is 300 over the past year and a half. In addition to doing VSAP presentations, we've been working with community organizations, reaching out, researching throughout the community, and we've attended during that same period over 500 community events with our network and our team of outreach specialists. We collaborate with all of the cities throughout LA County. We have a pretty consistent partnership with about 200 community organizations, and that really is growing. We're always looking to expand our network, we're always looking to include more people and more organizations within our network because as has been described throughout this presentation, the size of LA County really requires us to use a partnership-based model to effectively get the word out. So our collaborative outreach is what we call it, and it takes several forms throughout our outreach strategy throughout the county. One is we target specific audiences. So if there's a community or demographic we're looking to reach out to, if we feel that we need to do a little more impact or a little more attention in certain communities, for example, the north part of LA County traditionally does not host as many community events, so we emphasize outreach to northern part of the county a little more in order to find those events. But we're all over the county. We go out to Malibu, Lancaster, Pomona, Long Beach, and everywhere in between, even out to Catalina Island. We share our best practices. So organizations who are interested in civic engagement, we like to share what we've learned over the months and years of doing community outreach, and we like to share those practices to help make their impact more effective and increase the effectiveness of our partnerships. We created something called a VSAP Ambassador Program, which really reached out to organizations on a high level, brought them into our offices, trained them on how to promote VSAP, shared our talking points, and really encouraged them to then reach out to communities and demographics within their communities in order to spread the word of VSAP. And we also go out to events fairly regularly. We bring out ballot marking devices where it makes sense and where it can be effective, and we allow hands-on experience throughout the county. So for example, certain communities or cities have hosted town halls. We've encouraged them to put these together, bring people in, we'll bring the equipment, we'll bring the people, and it gives the public an opportunity to not only hear about VSAP, but also use the equipment and get a real experience of what the future of voting will be like in LA County. We also look for opportunities of greater engagement. What do I mean by that? Well, we like to mobilize our community organizations, and one way we did that was to help spread the word of the mock election. We had 50 sites all over LA County, which means we needed to reach out and get members of the public out to all 50 sites. We connected the individual organizations that work in specific communities throughout LA County with the specific mock election site in those communities that they are active within. Also currently, as mentioned, we have demo centers, 10 throughout LA County. We're working with our community organizations to really spread the word, we're working with our cities to spread the word. And for example, in the lobby, you might have seen here at the Long Beach City Hall, there's a demo center where you can, members of the public can come in at any day, they can go ahead and use the ballot marking device. And then as mentioned earlier, we've been encouraging town halls to be established, and this allows for large members of the public to really come in, learn about VSAP, and then use the ballot marking device as well. Part of the outreach and part of our mission in LA County is to promote language support, and it is a big part of our VSAP project and the work that we do with civic engagement. We have full language assistance in Armenian, Chinese, Kamai, Farsi, Hindi, Japanese, Korean, Russian, Spanish, Tagalog, Thai, and Vietnamese. In addition, we go above and beyond to offer additional support in Bengali, Gujarati, and Urdu. So there is a lot of language support, and one of the support services we provide is actually at the vote centers. Individuals will be able to come out and get an in-person assistance with language specialists, someone fluent in that language. And in addition, if someone who does not speak that language in person, if they're not at the vote center, we will have additional language services, including the ballot marking device, which has all the ballots translated in every language that we serve voters, and we'll have additional technology available where someone can FaceTime with a member of our registrar staff and get that language assistance as well. How do we determine, how to use our language resources? How do we determine what communities need what language assistance? Well, we do that in a couple different ways. One, we work, we focus on partnerships. We receive community input to help us make a determination on what communities need that such language assistance. And then we also use data from throughout LA County, not just data within our voter file, but other data related to the census and so forth. And we combine the partnerships and the data to really produce resources that is beneficial to the public and serves limited English proficiency voters. In addition to language assistance, we provide accessibility support. Some of the accessible services include vote by mail, interactive sample ballot, which was discussed and is available for any voter to use. We also have an enhanced remote accessible vote by mail, or RAVBM, as some people have named it, or some people refer to it. And the ballot marking device is fully accessible. We did make some improvements to our vote by mail ballot, and some of these do improve accessibility. Number one, it's a larger full-face ballot, so the text is easier to read, easier to fill out, easier to understand. As mentioned, with our language support, it's available in all of our multilingual options. Also, no postage is required, which is something that really benefits everybody. And we've established vote by mail drop boxes to give voters another method where they can return their vote by mail ballot. So they can, voters can return their vote by mail ballot by walking it into a vote center, they can take it all over to a vote by mail drop box, or they can mail it through the US Postal Service. I'm going to now turn it over to Julian and Jessica from Placeworks, who we've partnered with in order to establish something called the Vote Center Placement Project, and I'll let them take it over.
Hi, good afternoon. So as you've heard so far, this was a really robust process that involved a lot of moving parts. So for our piece, we started with community outreach to see what the voters were interested in for their new voting model. So we conducted eight focus groups and received 2,500 responses to statistically valid surveys that were questioning voters where they would like to vote. Did they prefer to vote near their jobs, near their homes, or near where they spend their time shopping and doing other business? We utilized these results at a later stage to determine how we should equitably distribute the vote centers throughout the county. These results showed generally that voters were interested in voting near their homes or near familiar facilities such as libraries and schools and city halls, places they were already familiar and comfortable with. We also conducted a desktop review. This involved a lot of online web-based research as well as phone interviews with various public agencies, property owners, to really get an idea if there were any deal breakers for the facility. So if there was no ADA accessibility or nowhere to park, then we had to eliminate those facilities. That was a really extensive piece, and it helped us to narrow down the locations. And then we were able to run those locations by public agency partners as well. As Jeff mentioned, it required a lot of collaboration, and we worked with a wide variety of agencies such as city clerks, parks and recs departments, and other various departments such as the post office, so they could help verify some of the information that we were discovering. We also developed a web-based online portal where voters could review a map that showed the current recommendations or the potential facilities that we were exploring. They could leave comments regarding the condition of the facility, and they could also suggest new facilities that we hadn't yet considered. Through that process, we received 1,700 suggestions and comments. We also did robust community engagement, and we conducted 67 meetings throughout the county. We worked with a wide variety of community-based organizations to facilitate those and to do the outreach. And our goal there was to do something like what we were doing on the online portal, which was to get their comments on the condition of potential facilities and to pick up any new facilities that we hadn't yet considered. Through that process, we received 903 comments and suggestions, and to Jeff's point, we provided language support in all 13 languages at the meetings, including printed materials and simultaneous interpretation. Next, we conducted a field review, which took all of the research that we had done so far, and we actually went out and visited all of these facilities to verify that everything we had researched so far was true. So that was an extensive process, and through that, we were able to identify any gaps in data and additional barriers such as programming or access and things like that. At the very end, we were able to pull all of this together, pull that community feedback from the surveys and the focus groups, and determine the weighting. So we could change a percentage. If we say, how important is it to vote near home, we could change a setting that Julian will tell you more about with the site suitability tool, as we call it. But it allowed us to look at different scenarios to address different concerns and to see how that would change the distribution of vote centers that were selected to be placed throughout the country. And Julian is now going to tell you a little bit more about the results from all of our work.
Hi, and thank you. So as Jessica said, part of what we did in the initial stages of this process was the desktop assessment, which involved contacting approximately about 7,800 different sites, public and private facilities, to determine whether they would participate in the vote center process. They wanted to be used as vote centers, whether they met the requirements. But once those were put into our database, we then had to go and do some field work. So we had a team of about eight different people went out, and we investigated about 2,300 sites. And it wasn't just a drive-by, it was to actually go in and make sure that they would meet the needs of the county for serving those vote centers as well as the public. Key to that was ADA accessibility, and we did run through a full menu of tests to make sure that these potential vote centers would meet ADA accessibility standards to be used. Approximately 84% of the facilities that we visited were suitable, and we did look at a wide variety of different types of facilities. So as we said, as Jessica said, you know, libraries and community centers at parks, schools, but as well as some private facilities. We got several shopping malls involved in the process as well as private nonprofit communities, facilities as well. Once we've evaluated the facility and physically evaluated the facility and accepted it, we then ran it through a GIS, geographic information system-based analysis so that we could equitably distribute them as well as make sure that again, these vote centers suited the needs of the county as well as the feedback that we received through our public polling and through our outreach. And what we, as Jessica again alluded to, what we found was that people were very comfortable voting next, near their homes, people were very comfortable voting near their works. So we looked at making sure that the vote centers were located in densely populated areas or in areas that were high in employment centers and various categories. And we presented our recommendations to the county and their technical advisory committees, refined it, and came up with the best 1,000 vote centers essentially through this process with the additional thousand in reserve for the county to use. And so as you can see, they're equally distributed throughout the county. They are primarily located in the denser, and this doesn't work, sorry, but in the denser areas. But we also made sure that some of the less dense, less populated areas of the county like northeast LA County and even Catalina Island, Avalon gets its very own vote center. So no corner of the So no corner of the county was left uncovered by our team and by vote centers. The steps that the county is undergoing now is they have gone and done a more thorough evaluation of the sites that we recommended to them, and they are in the process of initiating, securing their use in the March primary. And we're also in the process of giving the county instructions on how to maintain the database and keep on updating it with relevant data and data layers to ensure that as conditions on the ground change, they can update the vote centers and keep this as a living, active list. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Julian. I think through that process, what I think we hope to show to the public is that this was a very public process from the beginning. While we used data to gather input and research regarding geospatial analysis and the particular locations that would be available, the core of it was reaching out to the public to get their feedback on those locations. And I think what, one of the core elements of the election administration plan is, in addition to our education and outreach plan, is a current list of potential vote center locations. So as our Placeworks team, Julian and Jessica, mentioned, they provided us 1,000 locations that they were recommending, as well as another 1,000 that we could use as backups. What we are currently doing is conducting an extensive assessment for accessibility. So even beyond what the Placeworks team did when they went out to the sites, is a full accessibility checklist to ensure that these sites are fully accessible to the public. In addition, we have to conduct power and networking assessments. So our ballot marking devices require power, and our e-poll books require networking. So again, full assessments done by the county to ensure that the sites meet all of our requirements, in addition to the requirements that are in the Voters' Choice Act. Next up for what we need to do with the locations is to establish facility use agreements with the sites, to confirm the dates that are available, and to secure room reservations. Throughout this process, we want to let the voting public know that we will always accept feedback and input on locations, and we will always look for potential new locations to secure vote centers at. But right now, we are working to secure a list of between 1,200 that are in the current proposed election administration plan. Our goal is to have 250 vote centers at E-minus 10. So 10 days before Election Day, our goal is to have 250 locations open throughout Los Angeles County, followed by a ramp-up. Again, as prescribed by the Voters' Choice Act, a ramp-up the weekend before. So at E-minus 3, there will be a ramp-up to potentially 1,000 locations. So Saturday, Sunday, Monday, and Tuesday, the final four days, there will be approximately 1,000 vote centers throughout Los Angeles County. In addition, the Voters' Choice Act also allows for mobile voting. This is something that Los Angeles County pushed for very heavily in the adoption of the Voters' Choice Act, was the ability to provide mobile voting options for the public. So in areas, as was mentioned, that we have a lot in densely populated areas, there may be some geographically isolated areas where it doesn't make sense to have a full voting center or a full vote center throughout that entire time, but perhaps we can have a mobile vote center or a pop-up vote center in that area. Additionally, the mobile voting program allows us to target areas like senior homes or convalescent homes or homeless shelters, or a variety of other potential areas where, again, it doesn't, it might not make sense to have a full vote center, but we can use our mobile voting program to provide services in that community. And again, all of that will be in the election administration plan and in the final adoption of that plan. Those sites will be referenced. And finally, vote by mail drop-off sites. So in conjunction with the requirements of the vote centers, there are also requirements in the Voters' Choice Act regarding vote by mail drop-off sites. That was also a part of our partnership with Placeworks, and part of our Vote Center Placement Project was to identify locations where we could secure and have vote by mail drop-off locations. Again, these are the locations that will allow voters to come to a location and in a secure way drop off their vote by mail ballot. One thing to point out is that these sites are potential at this point. We would appreciate any feedback and comments on the locations that are in the election administration plan. There are approximately 1,200 in that plan. And again, if there's one that you don't see on the plan, you'd like to give feedback on, perhaps it was on the original list and came off for a variety of reasons, and we'd like to get that feedback and comments from the public on that process. And if there's any additional sites, we'd like to look at those as well. We want to take just a brief moment, and this information is in the election administration plan as well, regarding how vote centers will be laid out. What you see on the screen here and what's available in the election administration plan is a diagram of what one potential large vote center could be like. What we heard from some of the feedback in the MAK election was that the configuration of the room is important. So again, if there's feedback you want to give on how the vote center should be configured, those are things that we're still considering. What we want to ensure is that there's, the voters feel that their session when they're casting their ballot is private, but is also needs to be accessible. And so there's things that we have to balance in this process. And there's also requirements of individual vote centers that we have to take into account. Some vote centers are very small, some vote centers are very large, and I think we need to use the unique requirements of those different spaces to have the different layouts. And so each individual vote center will have an individual layout that our team will use to ensure that when we set up these sites, again, we ensure that privacy and the accessibility of the experience for our voters. And many have asked, you know, this is a new experience, will staff be available to assist with this process? The answer is absolutely. We will have a significant staffing component to this new model. The staffing, depending on the size of the vote center, and vote centers can range in size from having as few as 10 BMDs to as many as 50 BMDs. And we will have appropriate staffing for each of those sites. And it will range somewhere between five for perhaps a small site to as many as 27 staff that will assist voters. And in some ways, there's different jobs like we have in the current model. There will be a lead election worker who will be essentially the main lead worker in the vote center. We will also have check-in clerks who will utilize the electronic poll books that we mentioned before. We will also have a line monitor. That will be a person who will be out front, answering questions and assisting voters as they're coming into the vote center. Again, there could be some initial anxiety when a voter comes in, and we hope that someone will greet them right away and address those questions, and hopefully alleviate some of that anxiety and get them prepared to cast their ballot and check in. We will also have voting area monitors. So within the area of the actual ballot marking devices, we will have a staff who will be available. They won't necessarily be hovering over voters, but they will be available to assist voters with any questions they might have about the ballot marking device and provide whatever assistance voters need to get through the ballot marking device process. Additionally, we'll have provisional and a vote by mail clerk, and that clerk will really focus on ensuring that anyone who's in line that has a vote by mail ballot, we get them out of line and allow them to kind of get past the line and drop off their ballot. There will also be some opportunities or some, you know, at some capacity, the need to have a provisional ballot, and we want to make sure that there's a clerk to assist with that process as well. And that staff member will also give out the "I voted" sticker, which we know is very important for our voters. Again, we're going to be looking at a variety of different staff for this model. The Los Angeles County Board of Supervisors passed a motion recently to recruit county employees for our election worker staff, and we'll be utilizing a significant amount of county employees. Our own departmental staff will be utilized. We'll also use county temporary employees for this process. But there will also be an opportunity for community volunteers still in this new process. So community volunteers have been a staple of our election administration and staffing at polling places for decades, and we are appreciative of that and want to utilize them where possible. So there will still be an opportunity for community volunteers to volunteer as election workers. And we will also continue our high school voter engagement, to have high school students work as volunteers at our vote centers as well. One thing to keep in mind is that the new model is obviously new and has a lot of new technology components. So there will be significant training for this, far beyond the training that we offer under the current model. So all election workers, whether you're a county employee, whether you're a high school student, or whether you are a community volunteer, you will get significant training to ensure that you're prepared to assist voters, that you're prepared to utilize all the new technology throughout the process as well. And the final slide that we want to touch on is just the overall county's commitment to security of this entire process. And this is a process that, you know, we've talked a lot about the convenience of the system, accessibility of the system, to allow voters to engage really where they want, how they want, and when they want. But one of the hallmarks of this county administration plan, our election administration plan, and the county's overall VSAP initiative, has been a commitment to security. And the number one thing that we want to point out about this new system and the ballot marking devices that we'll be using, the core security feature is a human-readable, verifiable paper ballot. Anyone who says that this is an electronic voting system that can't be verified, that is simply false. This process from the very outset has had the hallmark of using a human-readable, verifiable paper ballot. So we want to make that perfectly clear. We have a lot of information about that process, a lot of information about the security of the system on our website. Another thing that's important to note, we've mentioned before, is that our ballot marking devices are not connected to any network. They're not connected to the internet at all. They're completely isolated and simply have a power cord to power them up. We have significant secure processes that are undertaken and significant chain of custody requirements. At the end of every night, all of the voted ballots will be securely taken by teams of two to, again, check-in centers that are manned by county personnel. And those ballots will all be taken back at the end of every night to our tally headquarters and tabulated, again, on Election Night when polls close. There is intrusion detection of networks. So in our polling, in our vote centers, we do have electronic poll books, and those poll books do require network connectivity. I will point out, those are secure, private networks that are whitelisted, and what essentially that means is the routers that are used in those polling places, we set those up. This isn't a public network that you can, that anyone who with a device can hook into the network. So there is intrusion protocols to ensure that devices can't get in. And if they do get in, there are notices that will pop up at our Security Operations Center and Network Operations Center that will be run by our department. So again, significant intrusion detection systems, and that will be monitoring the networks that are going on at our vote centers. The entire VSAP solution from beginning to end has gone through significant security testing. We've used third-party testers. So outside of our own department, we've hired firms to test the system from beginning to end. It's also important to note that our voting system is currently going through certification testing by the California Secretary of State's Office that does things like volume testing, functional testing, security testing, penetration testing. We point all this out, again, to focus on that commitment to security. Our entire security framework is, uses industry standards that are by the National Institute of Standards Technology. Again, the highest standards for security and, you know, requirements to ensure that our system is as secure as possible. And again, throughout the entire voting process, we have ongoing coordination with various law enforcement agencies and other government agencies, from the federal level through the Secretary of State's Office. At the federal level, the Homeland Security will be involved, the Federal Bureau of Investigation, the FBI, we have contacts with. At the county level, we use our Internal Services Department, as well as the county's CIO Department. Again, as sort of a framework where everyone is focused on this. Los Angeles County, again, has a commitment to security to ensure that voters, when they come in to cast their ballot, feel confident in the process, feel confident when they put that ballot into the ballot marking device so that it's secure, that they have the option to verify that ballot through a number of ways. And again, all those ballots are taken back and tabulated centrally in an isolated network that is completely secure and monitored by various agencies and our department throughout the entire process. And so with that, that really gives a synopsis of what is in the election administration plan. From the education and outreach plan, which we, the Los Angeles County will be investing significant resources to ensure it is robust, it is multilingual, it is comprehensive, it touches all demographics of the county, all 5.4 million registered voters. There is information regarding our language and accessibility support that we will offer in the rollout of the Voters' Choice Act and the VSAP model for Los Angeles County, to ensure that voters who are limited English proficient or voters who have disabilities have the same options to cast their ballot as any voter across Los Angeles County. We have a list of a potentially 1,200 vote centers and about 250 vote by mail drop-off boxes that we would appreciate getting any feedback from the public regarding that process, and down to the security and other contingency plans that the county has. So that is the election administration plan in a nutshell. And at this point, I will turn it back over to our registrar recorder county clerk, Dean Logan, for the public comment period. Again, there are various ways, other than right now, to provide public comment. We have our website at lavote.net. We have an email, vsap@rrcc.lacounty.gov, as well as a phone number, 562-229-6361. And at this time, I will turn it over back to Dean Logan.
Thank you, Aaron. Thank you, all of you, for making the presentations. Obviously, it's a lot of information to cover. It is a significant change in the voting process here in Los Angeles County, one we think that greatly enhances the opportunity for voters to participate and increases the access to the voting franchise. And so we're very pleased to be in a position where we're close to implementation and appreciate everybody participating. So at this point, we will open up for public comment. If anybody would like to offer some public comments or anecdotes, please come forward. We'd love to hear from you.
My voice can allow already, so. The mail-in ballots, you can still mail that, just put a mailbox and mail it out, right?
Yes, vote by mail ballots can still be returned by mail. No stamp is necessary. You can just put it into a postal service box. Just be sure that it is postmarked on or before Election Day.
Thank you.
Good, thank you. Okay, there are no other comments tonight. We will bring this public hearing to a close. Our next public hearing is next Tuesday at the Zev Yaroslavsky Family Service Center. And again, we encourage people to interact with us online and continue to follow us on social media as we move forward with the implementation. Thank you very much.